Thanks very much, everybody, for joining us today. I'm Katia Osekin, Program Manager for the Sustainable Schools Program, and we're launching our 2022 Top Energy Performing School Boards Report. The presentation will be delivered by Ian Jarvis, the Executive Director of the Climate Challenge Network. And even Ian, if you can flip over to the next screen, please. Thank you. The report, as probably many of you already know, is brought to you by Climate Challenge Network, which is the umbrella organization for sustainable schools and other collaborative sectoral programs. Our launch webinar sponsors today are Yorkland Controls and Energy Network Services, and our program overall is supported by ISO and Enbridge. The report is using data that's provided by Ontario Ministry of Energy and technical directions provided by Innerlife Consulting. Next slide, please. And our agenda for today, we're going to have a short review of the contents of the Top Energy Performing School Boards Reports, including the names of the top 20 school boards. We're going to have a quick review of some projects that Sustainable Schools Program has underway and has recently completed, and we will finish with a Q and A with some of the school board representatives we have invited to be on the panel today. And if people would like to submit any questions via the Q and A or the chat box as we go along, please go ahead and do that, and the school board panelists and Ian will pick them up during the Q and A time. Over to Ian.
Thank you, Katia, and welcome, everybody. It doesn't feel like a year since we last did this, but it's good to get back into the data and to get a read on how progress is happening with respect to energy uses. The year we're looking at is, as we'll get into, is 2019-20. So half of that year was the beginnings of the effects of school closures and other actions taken as a result of the COVID-19 epidemic. So for us, it's been an intriguing year trying to tease out the stories it's trying to tell. But we begin all Climate Challenge Network public webinars with land acknowledgement, and we do acknowledge with respect the ancestral and unceded territory of the Inuit, the Métis, and the First Nations people that share these lands with us. I'm speaking today from the traditional lands of the Huron-Wendell, the Haudenosaunee, the Anishinaabe, and the Mississaugas of the Credit River, and we hope and believe that our work honors the shared heritage and advances our common cause of healing the earth and the environment. Stepping on to the background to the report, as mentioned, this is the 2019-20 school year data from Ontario's public reporting with the Ministry of Energy. We have not updated but plan to soon the survey, facility information survey we conducted with the boards in 2021. We appreciated the boards confirming information on air-conditioning schools and heating system types and other key information that we can fold into the metrics to make the targeting a bit more accurate, more reliable. And as you know, the whole picture of this is ranking boards in terms of their energy savings potential. We'll get a bit more into that today, but remind everybody the white paper is up on our website, and you can review in depth the methodology, and we get occasional feedback from people questioning certain areas, and we love that because the more people understand the methodology, the better it becomes and the more comfortable we all get with the results that we're reporting today. Coming back to, it's been a funny two years. Nobody on this call has any question in their minds about what that relates to. This is the map from the Science Advisory Table in Ontario in terms of the periods of school closures, phased reopening, of partial reopenings, of full reopenings, and closures again. So both this year's report, 2019-20, and next year's report that we'll look at, 21-22, will be substantially affected by the results, by the actions taken by the boards in response to the pandemic and response to ministry directives. So we've done a lot of thinking about what the results mean, and we can share with that with you today, and I hope we'll get some questions about how do we compensate for this. But for the year, we're looking at one half, the first half of the year through most of the winter was kind of business as usual as the pandemic was looming, but the schools were open and systems were in use. So that sort of reflects business as usual in terms of all the energy efficiency efforts that the boards are undertaking. The second half began with closure, then moved into the summer and so on. So we're calling it a hybrid year, and all the results that we're looking at should be, from that perspective, there's kind of two different years here. One was, one, we're measuring the, again, the normal energy efficiency activity, and secondarily, we're looking at the response by the individual boards and the individual buildings to the pandemic and to closures and to how energy systems were adjusted during that period. So we thought it most useful for this report to look back over some history and then see what happened in 2019-20. This table really presents as well. This is looking at the energy savings, the energy reductions. So we changed all the wording in here to reductions as opposed to savings because they're not permanent, and they have limited relationship to actual efficiency improvements as we understand them. But if we run through here on the top row, the electricity reductions from prior years, we saw a 4.7% reduction over the two-year period in that first column, then electricity actually increased after adjustment for weather and portables and other variables that are allowed for within this methodology. Last year, we saw a 1.4% overall electricity reduction. In the most recent year, we saw 16.9%. So we can presume that the business as usual trend up until 2018-19 was around 2% per annum in terms of electricity savings. We can assume that the difference between that average and 16.9% is attributable almost entirely to the COVID-19 response. You can see the number of boards that actually showed overall electricity savings across all their buildings from over those years, and the majority of boards, all but four boards, showed net electricity savings in the most recent year. Same with gas, again, averaging high variability from year to year. You recall our concern last year, we reported on this, that gas consumption province-wide after adjustment for weather actually went up overall, even though a lot of boards and a lot of buildings made savings. The offsets from many, many schools that showed increased gas consumption more than offset that, and we'll come back to that around some of the research projects that are underway at the moment. But that average across that period of, again, a little less than 2%, we saw 4.3%, and the reference below, the closures, the final bullet below, the closures would have a bigger impact on electricity. If you shut fan systems down, the fans stop running, if nobody's in the building, the lights go off. If nobody's in the portables, the heat can at least be turned down, and again, given that most of the heating season was over by the time the first COVID shutdown took place, many of those could be shut off. But base building heating still has to be run, the buildings have to be safe and have to be comfortable and protected from freezing and so on. So for us, an interesting view for this particular K to 12 school sector of what the COVID response led to, and we're looking at the same kind of data coming out of most other commercial institutional and multi-residential building types, and it won't be a surprise, now they all reacted fundamentally differently from each other depending on the use and occupancy effects of the COVID results. So once again, if you have questions on this, Katia has pointed you to where to add them in. She is monitoring that, and we will interrupt the flow to answer the questions. If we don't get to all of your questions immediately today, we will follow up with them after this event. So getting into drumroll time, this is the big benchmark chart, unknown, unnamed, of the 72 boards to remind everybody that the ranking comes about by looking at the individual savings, energy savings potential for each of your buildings compared with a top quartile target for that building type. So top quartile electricity consumption, top quartile thermal energy consumption for each individual building, an elementary school, a secondary school, administration building, looking at that percentage savings reduction potential, and then rolling out all of the buildings for each board to get an overall assessment. So the range here indicates that the most efficient boards at the top have less than 10% room across all their buildings for making energy reductions to meet that top quartile target. While several of the boards at the bottom end of this chart still have more than 20% and in some cases, more than 30% room for energy savings. We see those targets as being readily attainable. There are levels that have already been achieved by many, many buildings, by one quarter of all the buildings in the province. So they're not leading edge, they're not bleeding edge. We see them as just when you get down to the numbers of the top performers here. This is just good management practice. So that is what the overall rankings look like. And keep in mind this year that we're measuring, we haven't changed the targets from last year. We're keeping the same targets, and therefore, this is a hybrid evaluation for the boards. But this is what they look like, and this again is drumroll time. Here are the top performing boards, and again, that combination of business as usual for you, energy efficiency activity, combined with the response that you took with your buildings to the school closures after the pandemic hit in March of 2020. So here are all of your rankings. So the number of facilities, the 2022 ranking is the column on the left-hand side, and for comparison purposes, take a look at where each of the boards was in 2021. There are eight boards that we'd love to recognize through this that showed a kind of remarkable improvements from year to year. The Northwest Catholic, which is the top, went from a ranking of six to one. But the Horton Catholic School Board, the York Catholic School Board, the Durham District School Board, Coatha Paine Ridge, Simcoe County School Board, the Conseil Scolaire Nord Est, and the Durham Catholic District School Board, if you pick them out, those eight among these 20, all showed remarkable improvements in rankings. So they actually improved relative to their peer group over the course of that year, and we concluded that this was the, that this was a reasonable way of evaluating our top performers for 2022. So again, congratulations to everybody on this list. Once again, all of the other boards, we have the background data files for all of your boards, and we're happy to engage with these 20 and with all of you to go deeper into the data and the metrics and what they can tell you about areas to focus on for making ongoing improvements. So these are benchmarks, are rankings for 2022 based on the 2019-20 year, and want to take you back again to this issue of variability in energy results. And one of the cohort projects we'll touch on in a moment is working, is looking to see what causes this variability between individual buildings, much of which is unreported and unknown to the individual school boards. So running through this, and again, if you look back to last year's report, which was more of a normal kind of year, the numbers are more extreme and more pronounced. But on electricity, on the left-hand side of this chart, what it's telling you is 521 buildings in the middle there were plus or minus, plus or minus 5% of their prior year. They didn't change very much at all, so we use 5% as that threshold. There were 2,488 buildings that made savings between 5 and 20%. There were 1,165 between 20 and 50. There are actually 20 buildings that made more than 50% savings. But on the left-hand side, you can see corresponding numbers which last year were much more significant. So the size of the orange bars is the magnitude of the electricity increases, but you can see the number of buildings across this dataset. So this year, essentially, 84% of all the buildings made a total of 269 million kilowatt hours in energy reductions, and they were offset by just 191 buildings, 16%. That went up by 13 million. On gas side, on the right-hand side of that chart, you can see the equivalent numbers much, much more tilted towards the numbers with increases. But once again, 42% of the buildings made substantial savings, 22% showed increases that offset the savings achieved by almost one half. So this, this unreported, unexplained variability within the 5,000 schools across the province continues to be an area of great interest to the ISO, to Enbridge, and to ourselves. And again, we'll talk some more in a moment about looking deeper into what causes unexplained increases. Are they primarily operational issues? What leads to those, and what are best practices to avoid them on a go-forward basis? So this is a key aspect to it from the ministries and the board's standpoint. Overall, the savings achieved in buildings contributed about $40 million in utility cost savings with a $2 million offset. So the province is net $38 million ahead because of the closures on the gas side. $7 million in gas savings were offset by about $3 million. So the, about $40 million of utility cost reductions, we're not going to call them savings, happened during this particular school year primarily as a result of closures. We're intrigued a bit about that number. So those are the primary results coming out of the data. I think, once again, your particular school board profile, we have comparative data showing your school board profile against these provincial averages. The boards that we've spoken to about their results find them interesting and helpful in pointing to both confirming what the savings potential is, understanding the business case for applying additional resources, which we believe are needed into the space, and then focusing on the buildings and the energy systems within those buildings that have the biggest potential for delivering the energy, the utility cost, and the greenhouse gas emissions saving potential which every board has. So let me pause for a second, Katia. Any questions or protests coming so far?
Nothing so far.
Good, okay, let's step on. So we touched on this last year, that sustainable schools, we don't do this just to keep the score. The whole purpose of the data analytics is to inform strategy, to drive perhaps programs, to drive perhaps even policy. And the data coming out of sustainable schools are used widely by regulators, by utility companies, and of great interest to government. So the intention is not just to keep the score, but to identify high-leverage areas of opportunity. The data keep kind of throwing up opportunities for why is this that way? And why do these buildings relate that way? And why do the buildings in the north behave differently than the buildings in the south? There's a succession of questions that come out, most of which are generated by discussions that we have with you, with individual boards, and we always welcome your calls. But looking at areas where, by taking collective action with boards, in many cases with industry experts, with utility companies, we can advance the agenda. We can advance the common understanding. We can put tools and resources in your hands that will allow you to accelerate the rate at which you're achieving energy savings in your building. So this has really become the reason for existence of sustainable schools. It's not just to produce data and keep a scorecard. It's to use the data to identify opportunities to make real improvements. There are three projects, cohort, we call them cohort projects because they had whole groups of boards and industry players and other supporters, other partners involved. Three cohort projects I wanted to update you on, two that are just getting underway right now, and the third is a bit of an update on what we'd mentioned last year, the charrettes that we were, the action planning charrettes that Enbridge and the ISO funded in 2020-21, that I think six boards took part in to help bridge the gap between energy targets and action. So if I've got, if these are my high gas savings potential buildings, what are the highest potential measures that I can take in those buildings to achieve really big reductions? So we wanted to touch on these three projects. So let me walk through each one. The background to the idea of strategic energy management is the most effective energy management we see within the school boards in Ontario, particularly with the top performing boards, has more to do with management practices and policies and approaches to building automation. In other words, systemic issues as opposed to retrofits or specific action in individual buildings. So strategic energy management is all about portfolio management. If you've got, many of you have got over 100 buildings. That's spread over gosh knows what kind of distances, and very often with very different designs and vintages. And you know, it's a breathtaking responsibility and challenge that you have within that. And the most effective boards we've seen are the ones that have got the most effective management practices, their internal reporting systems, how do they pick up on schools which go out of kilter? Either suddenly the energy use jumps by 10% or 20% or 50% because of some local action, or in many cases, actually goes the other way, that a local initiative by a caretaker or a service contractor actually delivers significant savings, but nobody notices because you've got so much data to deal with in so many buildings. So all of that is being flushed out, is being made apparent by the analysis that's done each year by Sustainable Schools. And the conversation with the ISO was around the, can we use the data on the hundreds of buildings across the province which had unexplained energy increases in 2018-19? So this began, the analysis came from last year's report when COVID wasn't involved. Can we use that information to identify five boards and five schools from each board which had a greater than 20% increase or savings and which is not explainable by known projects? So we're looking for the plus or minus 20% or more that is not explained by something that the board was already aware of. You may recall that earlier this year, we sent a survey out to all the boards. I'm very conscious at the time of just how much you had going on and how much pressure, all the pressures that were on you. We were thrilled that 12 of the boards responded. The, we've had calls with a number of them since. They cover about 20% of the schools in the province that had, again, more than a 20% increase or reduction in electricity or gas or both. That was the subset we were looking at. And the phases of this project from the survey, we're having calls with them now. We're offering them the opportunity to join the project. The project's being largely funded by the ISO and two industry partners that we really welcome, bringing technical expertise around metering and building automation as well as providing some funding. There is some funding required from the participating boards, but the intent, as the goal says here, is to use, is to identify by analysis of those buildings that went up and down, the management and operational practices that will allow them to consolidate savings when they appear and to avoid increases through operational missteps. We believe that the number associated with this might be the biggest single potential for energy savings across Ontario's school boards in general. You know, it was those numbers that we're seeing of the unexplained increases, they're huge. So the phases are, we did the survey, we're in the process of board selection. If you're interested in the project, please do contact Katia, and she can provide more details and see if this is something that might be useful to your particular board. We'll be having a workshop, bringing the five boards and the other players together. The end result will be a guidance document that will issue through a webinar to everybody, saying, here's what we found, here are the top 10, top 15, top five, whatever they are, things that you can do and the practices you can adopt, particularly around reporting, around metering, around building automation, that will allow you to move up the benchmark charts and deliver very substantial savings without too much capital investment. So this is our strategic energy management project. Again, if it sounds of interest, we would still be very happy to receive additional survey responses from other boards. And again, that will follow up with a call with us to go through the results coming from that and say, how does this feel? Is there something that would be useful to you? The second project that came about, actually through conversation with Mark Trodowski at Simcoe County District School Board, and the number of major rooftop unit replacement projects that are going on across the province, there are hundreds of units being installed every year. Once again, the ISO had a real interest in this because with the growing requirement for air conditioning in schools during summer, most of that has been provided again through rooftop units and the potential for better practices around the specifications. So the design, the equipment selection, the programming, the commissioning of rooftop unit replacement projects to develop guidance for every board to hand to their consulting engineers, saying, we want it done this way, not that way. And it's going to result in much lower energy usage and lower lifecycle costs for everybody involved. So that again is the plan for that project. Once again, ISO is providing the lead funding. Kilmer and Carmichael, we welcome them from the contractor standpoint and from the equipment supply standpoint. And with all of this industry participation, you know, I'll call out here, the willingness to really look to move the knowledge, move the needle in terms of what we know and open their mind to alternative ways is quite remarkable. So the technical expertise coming from our industry participants. Once again, there's some funding, not very much required from participating boards. The intent here is to find between five and 10 recently retrofitted schools to track their energy performance before and after, and then dig deep into those big questions. The design, did it incorporate full heat recovery from all the exhaust air on the school? If we replace the rooftop units, do we take the time to incorporate exhaust air heat recovery? Because that's absolutely necessary if we're going to make progress towards net zero. What are the equipment selection options? What are the variations on a theme within equipment? How efficient are they? How are they controlled and monitored? And what was the commissioning practice? What did the commissioning agent actually check on when those installations were put into place? So there's real interest here in... when those installations were uh were put into place? So the um there's there's real interest here in 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 substantially raising the bar. We actually, yeah, everybody looks down at rooftop units as being kind of uh uh the poor sister in all of this uh i- i- in in HVAC systems. We're very interested to see just what do the most efficient rooftop unit installations look like? And how can we upgrade everybody to that level over a a period of time? So once again, we're in the process, early stages right now of uh school board selection, of the data analysis. Once again, we'll get all the boards together with the players for a strategic workshop. And once again, you can expect to see around the end of the year, early next year, a guidance document coming through a Sustainable Schools webinar saying, here's what we found, here's what you can do differently, and here is a guidance document for your consideration that you might care to use when you hire your consultants to do the next big project. So that's where that will flow. Um briefly, because I only leave half of this time for our our panel discussion. Um updates on the uh the shirets that uh we reported on last year, so between twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. Uh six school boards with five schools each chosen because of their high energy savings potential. And all of you know now, or you can know just by contacting Katia, which your high savings potential buildings are. And the intent was to bridge the gap between targets and action. So what are the high impact actions that relate to high gas savings potential, high electricity savings potential? And within um within that work uh was developed an action plan template, which I think everybody might find useful. The the uh so uh the 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 planner flagged measures which not only contributed to and to substantial energy savings, uh but also those that were necessary for the COVID COVID response for safe operation. So uh several of the measures kind of fit both bills. They're a win-win. Uh once again, we went through um the the phases of the work, the interviews. Uh I think substantiated a lot, the the uh the usefulness of this process. Focus on high potential buildings. You're going to have to do things in other buildings, but take your uh your handful or your fifty, whatever percentage it is of high potential buildings. That's where most of the action is. Uh and that's where the shortest paybacks are. Um the discovery that the 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 school boards with the most uh the most functional building automation systems and the ability to monitor remotely the operation of their buildings had by far the better uh outcomes. And that the energy targets, it was not difficult to make the correlation between very high gas use or very high electricity use and uh the measures that were necessary to uh to bring it down to the target levels that we're talking about. So this report is available on uh on the Sustainable Schools website. Do do take a look. I think you'll find it interesting and helpful as uh as maybe a contributor to your uh your your overall strategy. And we're in discussions, as I'm sure you would expect, with uh with Embridge and the I S O now about uh uh about continuation of the shirets kind of approach of a time. So checking once again Katia, anybody uh anybody pushing uh pushing questions, pushing ideas?
I've had a couple of questions in the chat that I've answered, um but I don't think we need to address them uh over over the webinar live, so I think we're good to step through the panel discussion.
Great. So let's get into the stuff where uh we get a lot of feedback after these events, uh these these launch webinars every year. And the feedback is always, we'd love to hear more from our uh counterparts and and interact more. So this is where we really hope that you'll uh you'll push the button and 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 pose your questions and they can be to agree, disagree, reinforce, or throw in uh new perspectives on this. But for our uh Q and A session this year, we really wanted to explore what happened uh around COVID. Um so uh what what did the boards do? Uh initially, what did the boards do once um once things got rolling and ministry directors and Ashray was stepping into the mix and funding programs, the two tranches of funding in Ontario came out. And importantly for me, lessons learned. So what uh uh share with us, what do we learn uh not just uh to help us live with COVID because it's not going away? Uh so COVID nineteen is going to be here, but the likelihood is in all of our lifetimes, we're going to see other emergencies of this kind of nature coming along. So wh- what have we learned that we can uh feedback? I mean, government is on this call, utilities are on this call. So feedback to policymakers, but also share with each other about how how can we be best prepared as this goes forward? Uh thrilled with that that our panelists all agreed uh to be part of the conversation. Uh and you've seen uh these boards showing um showing really good results uh back in the beginning, which is how we shortlisted the folks that we would like to talk to. So happy to have Steve here from Colton Catholic. Uh Mary Ann from Durham District School Board, um and you saw the improvement in the Durham Board over time. Uh and uh but uh let me just pause for a second. Uh we think twenty twenty one, twenty twenty, uh sorry, twenty nineteen twenty um uh where we saw overall reductions, we're speculating that next year it might look a whole lot different. Uh that as um as modifications are made to operations and air handling systems and portable filters, um the energy numbers could well go in the other direction. And so we're really intrigued to see how how that plays out. So Alan, I know you're on the line, the sooner you can get the data to us, the sooner we can see what happened in twenty 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 one. Uh but anyway, going back, uh Steve, Mary Ann, happy to have you here, Neil and Khalid uh uh from uh from your Catholic School Board and Khalid can also bring the perspective from Toronto Catholic School Board where he was uh previously and
probably was able to join us today. I think Ian, Neil is the only one representing your Catholic for the
Okay, okay, that uh then I I won't, I won't put Khalid on the spot, which in the past I've enjoyed doing. So thanks for doing this, Neil. So um so the 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 questions and Mary Ann, if I if I may, I'm going to start with you, the uh the and and really want to focus first on that period from March twenty twenty to August twenty twenty. So when the storm clouds were were looming and COVID was becoming regular and it wasn't going to be community transmission and then there was uh and then the shutdown came in March. What were the immediate steps that you took at Durham District? And what kind of challenges did you face during that period?
Uh can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, Mary. Thank you.
Um I, in our board, um I guess everybody was pretty much the same, kind of panicking a bit, trying to figure out what was going, because nobody really knew how this thing was um being transmitted. Uh for us, the March was, I think for everyone, the lockdown and uh everybody got sent home. So we had the luxury, I guess it's a luxury, of being able to remotely control our buildings. So immediately everything was shut down and um anything that wasn't remotely able to be shut down, we went around and shut anything that's pneumatically controlled or electric and electrically controlled, we shut everything down. And of course, um it's easy to save energy when you're shutting everything off.
Yeah.
And the, when we started coming back gradually, uh we didn't just bring everything back online. We went with sort of a approach where as people came back, we started enabling systems. And we had a a crew that during the lockdown, not everyone was off. Uh our energy department was still online, working from home, monitoring systems, making sure that the minimums were maintained with respect to heat and such, at least during the March period. But other than that, um everything was shut down. And when the custodians came back, we started disinfecting and implementing how we were going to do the MERV thirteen situation, stuff like that. So as the ministry guidelines came out, we just started implementing them. And I don't know, I think that's about it for me.
Uh yeah, we will come back. So so the building automation, once again, is essential to all of this in any building, but in particular with big portfolios. Steve, the same question to uh to you, what happened at Colton Catholic?
Yeah, thanks Ian and Katia. Um very similar answer to Mary Ann. All of our buildings are on building automation, so they were off uh just looking back at our real time energy monitoring here as I was waiting to speak. Uh we don't have trends for B A S going back that far. You have to cast your mind back, which seems like a lifetime ago to March twenty twenty, but uh could see that everything went off that uh week of March break, I believe it was, and uh stayed off until August, all done remotely. Um as these things happen, you know, a little bit serendipitous, I had started that year um tying all of our nightlights into our school, at our schools, into the security systems. So as these schools were um armed and unoccupied, we we didn't have um lights on at any of our schools, probably at all in many of them. Uh and other schools would have been on motion, so they would have been off too. So that was a bit of a little bit extra kick for us because it was predominantly school baseload that would be used from March to August. Um the only difficulty we had Ian was that we've got two hundred and thirty portables or so for fifty eight buildings. So it's uh you know, an average of almost exactly four portables a school. And they're all leased, so um unfortunately, they would run in the morning um because we don't have any kind of remote control over those. But as as you had rightly pointed out earlier, they were, we were largely past the heating season by then. Um so they would run for a few hours in the morning and then and then turn off. I can certainly see where the schools that had numerous portables, twenty, thirty or more in some cases, they were using a bit more, but that would probably been the only challenge. We had a crew going around as well, just like Mary Ann. Um I had the unlucky um one of the schools uh that I I was looking after, I I'm sure is haunted, so I got that one. Um but other than that, very similar to Mary Ann.
Hope it was an agreeable ghost that would help you turn lights off, but good times.
Uh probably the other way around, but yeah.
Okay, the the evil ghost, okay. Uh Neil, you're Catholic, what was uh what was happening there?
Yeah, so basically, um uh can you hear me, Ian?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Yeah, so basically the same as Mary Ann and Steve um indicated in the beginning. Um you know, uh put everything to setback and with the real time monitoring of the energy, kind of double check to make sure that everything um shut off. Um if anything wasn't, um you know, trying to investigate to see what caused it. Um and as uh as everything started opening up, um you know, increasing the schedules um for the flush of the schools and also on fresh air intake as well, so increasing the minimum on uh damper positions on units. Um so that's going to, you know, increase the um the consumption as well.
So Neil, let me ask, was that done in that first period that March?
No, it wasn't. No, no, that's later on.
So we're so we'll step into when when life got even more complicated and now we got funding and directors and all kinds of things to deal with, but initially it was a shutdown strategy.
Exactly. Initially, everything was shut down.
Uh say, uh you know, there's no good news about COVID, but the idea that the province did save forty million dollars during that period to uh exactly. Uh Mark, same question.
Okay, there we go. Thanks. Um right, so similar to the uh to the other board. So during the periods of school shutdown, which happened immediately in March, so we got on to um the runtimes and set points on air handling systems were reduced according to occupancy and occupancy was uh really effectively zero. Uh outside air dampers were closed accordingly. Uh we didn't utilize this mechanical cooling once it got into um into that time of year. And then, of course, lighting and electrical power consumption uh was reduced quite a bit due to schools not being in operation. And I might add that in addition to schools not being operated during the regular school day, um the evening permits, all evening permits as well, were count uh were canceled.
Yeah.
Uh you know, thereby limiting the need for ventilation, heat, cooling, lighting and power. So in addition to the um uh the reductions in the daytime, there was also that inherent um uh reduction at nighttime.
Okay, so that 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 that's very helpful. Thank you. No surprise from uh from all four of you. And again, if we then look across the boards, the that first response to the shutdowns, uh there's nobody now, it quotes nobody, uh some caretakers, nobody in the schools. Uh let's shut everything off as a first reaction. Again, that clearly saved a lot of uh a a lot of utility costs, a lot of greenhouse gas emissions. We've seen the impact of that. Let's step along then to yes, of course.
Robert Smith passed along a question uh to the panelists. Did anyone find anomalies in the scheduling you're able to fix or improve while you were reviewing each building?
Let's uh let's go back to you, Mary Ann, if you can.
Uh we, as part of our uh not during the lockdown, well, actually, yeah, I guess we, because we were around during the lockdown, we started looking into problems with, we don't have as much real time monitoring, we're working on that as some people. Um but we had people online looking for things that were running that shouldn't be, right? And looking at scheduling and all sorts of different avenues. And we found that um we needed to do some calibration. So as soon as everybody came back, for us, it was a ten week lockdown. I'm not sure if everybody's the same. When people started coming back, we went into full analyzing and calibration of all our mechanical systems and with respect to HVAC or um our own building automation systems and everything got calibrated. And so, yes, we did find anomalies and were able to correct quite a bit.
That's uh as always, Robert, that's a great segue into uh uh in into, let's 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 step on to then, say, the 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 second year. So now we're looking from September twenty twenty to August uh twenty twenty one. And during that period again, uh uh funding from the ministry, um Ashray, guidance, ministry directors, a lot of stuff going on and it all coalesced, didn't it, around uh upgrading uh existing air handling systems, uh use of portable HEPA filters where um where where that wasn't appropriate and ventilation system upgrades, maintenance, deferred maintenance and so on. Um let's start with y- y- you if we could, Mark. What kind of mix of those strategies or other strategies and how did you organize around? Like you you've got over a hundred schools. How how did you organize strategically around getting your staff engaged in and getting things working properly so you could assure everybody of a safe return to school?
Okay, so Ian, to uh to clarify, so you're asking for that period just leading up to the September of uh twenty twenty one.
Yeah, that is correct.
Yeah. So again, the um I'll just take it back to uh you know, back to March. And if everybody recalls, which I'm sure you do, um you know, nobody having really a lot of um information or or background uh on a pandemic. If if you recall, the initial announcement was is we're going to shut down for two weeks. See out for two weeks, everybody's saying, all right, then see you in two weeks. Without giving much thought and hindsight, it's kind of the uh kind of a crazy uh idea. But that's uh that's the state we were at. So the the biggest challenge initially was really the uncertain, not so much getting the stuff done. A lot of our um most of our equipment, uh certainly in the schools, proper, are controlled remotely through B A S, not so much in all the portables. And there was a little bit of a running around effort uh connected to that. But really, it was that decision, like at what point is it going to be really two weeks? Maybe it's going to be four weeks, maybe. And nobody really knew. And then that was all kind of um leading up to September again. Um there really wasn't, everyone thought we were going back, but we didn't quite know for sure if we're going back. So most of the challenges in in mobilizing um the effort was around the uncertainty um on the timing of when it was going to happen. Looking back on it now, it it seems very intuitive that we should have known this, but uh I don't think we all did that well.
That's uh the the phrase is good to recall, the uncertain times. Uh Steve, that 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 second year, the when when we know it's for real.
Yeah, I just I had to do a little bit of research myself as to all the different things that we did uh leading up to the September twenty twenty. But um like a lot of boards, I'm sure we had uh pre and post occupancy flushing, so we had to drastically increase the uh amount of uptime, uh operational time of our mechanical systems. Uh disabled demand control ventilation, changed a lot of set points and um minimum setting on some of our terminal units too. Uh you know, it, we had the benefit of having some of our heat pump schools because we're in the midst of replacing all of our heat pumps. Uh they had just been done, air and water balance had just been done very recently, so there wasn't a lot to do other than schedule changes, but there was, the schedule changes were the big thing. And of of course, with The schedule changes were the big thing. And of of course, with um, central BAS, it's not a matter of flipping a switch, but you know. It's not a, it's not a going around to a a myriad of different schools to change settings manually. It's all done with the, with the BAS itself.
So we should expect to see a significant impact on that, as you say, on gas use, a little bit on electricity use. Because of longer runtime of fans, but uh, all of this would have come into effect in the winter of twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. Is that correct?
That's correct. We will see a, you know, electrically too. Um, you know, I don't want to get too much into the weeds here, but. Starting in September, for sure, it would be for both of, just the increased runtime and um. Fan horsepower and outdoor ventilation and all that is gonna, next year is gonna be interesting, say the least.
Yeah, Neil, that's uh, what was happening in that second crazy year at York Catholic?
Yeah, so very, very similar to to what Steve said, uh, you know, extending the schedules for flushing, adjusting set points, um. Reducing the set points in in the um, warmer times since people were in mass. And uh, yeah, very similar and to to what Steve was saying as well.
Mary Ann, anything to add there?
Um, not really. I'm sorry, I was answering a question in the chat and I.
Okay.
Can you just repeat?
So it's uh, yeah, that that second year after um, uh, the school year of twenty twenty. When the COVID was was already established to twenty twenty one, that second year when we were seeing funding. Uh, from the government, we see directives. Um, what were the, what were the main activities? And how did you organize around making improvements?
Um, we, uh, the first thing that I remember us focusing on was the MERV thirteen situation, the filters. Um, we went into uh, finding out how many, we knew how many filters we needed, but it was a matter of getting quotes from companies. For those MERV thirteen filters and implementing a replacement of uh, all the schools. Including, and it's amazing that you think, oh, just a bunch of air handlers, but there were rooftops, there were unit vents, there were um, portables. Everything had to be taken into consideration. And we did end up finding out that some devices that probably hadn't had filters changed in a while. And the budgeting of all this, we also had to deal with the HEPA filters or the HEPA filtration units. And the, we ended up buying, implementing over twenty three hundred of them and replacement filters. And all this came at a huge cost, uh, that we weren't aware of how much the, our budgets weren't going to increase. That was a challenge. Um, and as we were going through calibrating the HVAC systems with our BAS and pneumatics, that was also uh. We don't have internal pneumatics people, so we use CIVRIS money for, oh, sorry, COVID money for helping. Get things calibrated from a pneumatic point of view. So just the, we did all the ministry objectives. We just found that the cost, and we were concerned about the cost moving forward too. Are these mandates going to remain in effect? And where will that funding come from? I don't know if that's probably not something you were asking, just a question I have uh, moving forward. So we implemented everything that was required, including outside. Air increases, you name it. We tried to do everything possible to, to help out with the COVID situation.
That's uh, that's great, Mary Ann. Thank you. Mark, back to two two questions, uh, unit ventilators. So we 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 always think of rooftop units and big central air handling units, but uh, most boards have a lot of. Uh, unit ventilators and HEPA filters. How much, how much of your budget, your allocated funding went into HEPA filters? What's your rationale? So could you address those two things?
Right, so in terms of HEPA filters, so first of all, just uh, backing it up as far as um, uh, filtration. Uh, we have upgraded um, everything um, as part of the, you know, the last couple of years uh, to MERV thirteen. Now, we are partly there, we are good way to uh, on a rope to MERV thirteen, um, uh, air filters anyways. And where we weren't, uh, we have stepped up and right now, we have one hundred percent of our air handling equipment, which is served by. Uh, MERV thirteen. As far as HEPA filters, uh, what we've done is we've installed them where mandated by the ministry. So specifically kindergarten classrooms as well as learning spaces without mechanical ventilation. And um, uh, sorry, back to the MERV thirteen, sorry for bouncing around. That does include our unit ventilators, because the question was in reference to unit ventilators. Um, so we did put in the MERV thirteens, uh, including portable unit ventilators. So I mentioned for the uh, HEPA filters, we installed them in kindergartens as well as learning spaces without mechanical ventilation. And I might add that, um, you know, following the installation of new HVAC systems in portions of five. High schools that previously didn't have mechanical ventilation, we now have mechanical ventilation serving one hundred percent of our. Uh, learning spaces. Um, so how does that connect to the HEPA, our our stance on the HEPA filters was. And still is that these are largely intended for spaces without mechanical uh, ventilation. Uh, where we have mechanical ventilation, um, you know, we've shown that we can maintain, you know, CO two levels of eight hundred. Parts per million or so. I mean, it spikes up after lunch and whatnot. And what this tells us, it indicates a presence of a good level of air exchanges. And we feel this is more, you know, beneficial. Uh, than a HEPA filter. So we've kind of avoided the uh, or resisted um, the move to go with HEPA filters. Beyond what was mandated of us by the ministry.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Uh, let me, with the time left, and again, we, I I'd happily do this all afternoon, but uh. Uh, we we respect people's timelines. Let me go through the four of you, Steve, Mary Ann, uh, Neil and uh, and and Mark. Um, lessons learned. If you had to do it all over again and looking forward, what are the one or two things that are top of mind for you? About wish we would do this differently or, man, I'm really gonna focus on this on a go forward basis. Steve, put you on the spot first, and Mark, we're gonna let you uh, be have the closing, the closing kick of the can here. Stephen.
I was actually hoping other people would go first, because I was struggling with an answer on this one, not sound too uh, like we did everything perfectly, but. I don't know, we're we're a uh, you know, we're a good size aboard, a very agile team here, good leadership. So I feel like we respond, like no one. Knew this was coming, right? And we didn't know what uh, you, no one could have prepared for, you know, uh, a full school closures. And what the world ended up being like in March twenty twenty and onward. But um, I kind of think that, you know, through a combination of the. Various elements that I just mentioned, um, I think we responded pretty well. And, you know, I didn't get into much of some of our strategies. To you, that we use with our CVRAS funding and that, but um, you know, between. Our response in March of twenty twenty and then what we use our funding for as a mixture of operational and capital projects. I kind of think Holton Catholic did a, did right by the whole situation. So um, if I think of a lessons learned, I'll let you know, but I think it's more positive for us than negative.
Good. Mary Ann, your, your top one or two ideas?
Uh, I have to agree a bit. Um, it was such a, it seemed like such a reactive time. We, we seem to be always panicking and we were, you know, boxing up HEPA filtration units and we were boxing up. PPE was enormous, like PPE seemed to take a lot of our time. I don't know about other boards did with respect to this. But we were, as a maintenance department, we were dealing with that. So on top of all of the other things, we were trying to get enough PPE out to the schools. Uh, we were focusing on ventilation, we're just, it was very, it was very reactive versus proactive. And if I had to go back, I was, I would be hoping that everybody would be less panicking and more thinking things out a little more. Logistically before we had to react. That, that's the only thing. Other than that, we did everything, as everyone else said, that we had to do. And I think we did it remarkably considering on the situation and things kept changing and they kept learning more. The only thing I have to say, I think I said this to you earlier when we had our initial meeting, was I would love to have seen um. More emphasis on whether we really needed to flush before and after school. Um, I'd like to see some more investigation in that, just because of, to me, it just seemed a little like washing the dishes before and after dinner. But I, you're on there. So other than that, uh, that's really all I have to say.
That's uh, that's helpful. Yeah, yeah, that's be, uh, it's nice not to panic. Neil, uh, closing thoughts?
Yeah, so I think we um, we did a pretty good job overall. Um, you know, lessons learned, uh. It's just, you know, very, very reactive on certain things. Um, but I think we, we dealt with it uh. Fairly well, given the um, situation. You know, I think uh, with regards to, you know, HEPA filtration, ours, I guess, flushing, building flushing in in operation. You know, because we're still, we're still actually doing it now as well. Um, I guess there's been no real direction on when, when we could actually put things back. To how, how um, you know, normal operations. So I'm not sure if there's some, you know, more direction in that sense. On when we could actually uh, return to normal operations.
That's great, and and what those normal operations will be, it's great.
Yeah, yeah.
Mark, last one to you.
Okay, there's um, not two or three uh, kind of thoughts. Uh, I suppose there are lessons learned um, over the last couple of years. Uh, moving forward, and I'll start with um, with the COVID funding that we received uh, for the HVAC recommissioning. Uh, or enhanced maintenance, um, i- if you will. So what we did there as part of our um, part of the money, the funding that we received. We did a comprehensive, a system-wide uh, recommissioning, enhanced maintenance of all HVAC equipment, that's everything. So that included cleaning, servicing, inspection and repair and or replacement. Uh, to improve equipment functionality and same time enhance indoor air quality. We also did a fair bit of air handling unit testing and optimization, rebalancing, adjustment of controls. And really, the lesson learned there is um, when we got into it, we found there was quite a bit of uh, equipment. That wasn't working. It either wasn't working properly, wasn't working at all. And so what we found was that, you know, in years past. In uh, you know, times where, you know, the budget was a little scarce, these are areas we had cut back. So what this um, kind of, well, it really taught us. That going forward, uh, we need a better standard and we've adopted that and we've uh, there's been a commitment made to some additional money on an ongoing basis. Uh, to maintain all the HVAC equipment. So the beneficial impact is not only on system. And equipment performance and longevity, uh, also energy performance and indoor air quality. So that's quite a big lesson learned uh, for us on that. Um, two other ones that I thought are kind of interesting is uh, the elevated standard for air filtration going to MERV thirteen. Uh, I think everybody probably concurs that that standard is here to stay. So there's, that's kind of a double edged sword. Uh, costs a little bit more money. Um, it provides, you know, beneficial filtration performance. But it will potentially affect HVAC, you know, system and energy performance due to, you know, increased static pressures in areas. So that's something we're gonna keep an eye out. And uh, finally, the last thing is, again, moving forward, I think there's a very heightened awareness. With ventilation and air quality standards, uh, you know, from the public, from teaching staff, from the other staff. And again, that's a, that's not a bad thing, that's a good thing. So although there's some costs associated with that. This heightened awareness, um, I believe is um, uh, here to stay.
Thank you for that, Mark. Very uh, that's that's a very thoughtful closing. That's right, things that are here to stay. And uh, and and how the pandemic um, kind of surfaced or uncovered some of the sins from the past. Where we have been uh, un- under resourcing the maintenance of our buildings and something like this happens. It comes back to remind us that uh, uh, may not be the best way to go. Uh, the results from all of your boards kind of uh, confirm the fact that. Uh, you did indeed do a great job with the management. Um, the, uh, and and once again, people know where to find you for any follow up questions. And uh, and let me say again, that we're here for, for all the boards, we welcome these conversations. We are the kind of clearinghouse for the best practices, the best knowledges, uh, best knowledge that uh. Uh, that we can extract from all of you based again on the results that you show in terms of your uh, energy use. Let me uh, uh, the, finally, just the uh, the thank you, you know where to contact Katia. Her contact references here. Once again, thanks to ENS and York Client Controls for helping, helping us put this uh. This presentation together. You know where to contact Sustainable Schools and the information about the cohort projects I mentioned, you can uh, find. Uh, within there. Uh, and one last time, we uh, we thank you for taking the time out of your amazingly busy schedules to. Uh, to share this, the, this event with us. And uh, we we truly do look forward to hearing from you. We uh, we're looking forward to advancing this agenda and we can only do it with you. So thank you, everybody. Have a great day. And uh, and I'm sure we'll be talking to most of you very soon. Bye now.